Order Joshua City Council Work Session followed by the regular meeting. The Joshua Council Chamber, one South Main, Joshua, Texas. This is an open meeting. It is closed to the public due to COVID-19, but it is still subject to the open meeting clause of the state of Texas. If any member of the public would like to speak, if they will send in an online paper card, Terry will receive that as that one to us. We have a quorum present. This time I'm going to go out number one into the work session, which is review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statements for May 2020. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statements?
Based on how things are going right now, Josh, do you see any major drop off in our revenues or?
Yes, last Friday, we received our June allocation for sales tax, which would have been an April number, as you remember our last meeting, we were all anticipating that. There has been no change. We've not seen any road bumps at all. We're still about a little over two percent ahead of budget, sales tax. Those, that's, you know, two different reasons for that. One is because we've blessed some conservatively, conservatively to begin with. You remember, we had about eight, nine percent growth rate as of last year at about seven to four percent. And right now it's two percent above budget. The last number, so we're still heading this thing to January. So luckily, we have not seen much.
Anybody else have any other questions on the financial statements?
I would just, I would just say that obviously with us not having, this last time with us not being a super grand, which we found out, I think a week or two after we ended up with the budget, obviously the budget numbers don't look really good right now, but there's a hundred budget overall. Can we adjust the sever branch of the four hundred budget? We're trying to unwind what we do every year on the budget and trying to come in under what has been approved. So that's going to inform us as we go forward into budget increases for next year.
Next, then, review and discuss information related to the drainage issues affecting commercial businesses, six oh nine through six thirteen North Broadway. Would ask Mike Peacock to give us a little summary on that, and then would that some of the people that are involved are going to be speaking as well. Mike?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me, Myra?
Yeah, all yours.
Hey, there should be a staff report in your packets. This is an issue that started some time ago. Um, back in, I guess, it was first brought to our attention back in two thousand and fifteen, uh, when the Pet Pines Pet Pampering new owner, Mrs. Wolf, uh, was complaining about drainage problems and flooding of her property that was, uh, coming down a utility easement where the water had been channeled for a number of years. I guess back, what started the issue was the construction of buildings that started in nineteen eighty-seven. Back in that time, there were not a whole lot of drainage requirements, certainly not to the extent that there are today. Nobody really cared about stormwater runoff until, um, the government decided that they owned it. And so since then, there's been considerable laws generated to affect stormwater runoff. This problem was exacerbated, I guess, uh, after the, uh, construction of the Wildwood addition, although the problem existed prior to that. Uh, there was some, uh, coloration of the water. It was clear that a lot of the runoff was coming from that subdivision despite the erosion control measures that were in place, uh, according to the stormwater maintenance plan. Initially in two thousand and fifteen, we believed that we, the city, had some leeway to enforce some, uh, guidelines on the, uh, the owner of the, the building that now houses, I believe Sandy Squilt Shop, Mr. Wright. And he had made some changes on that property, built a berm up and contoured flow watered where, uh, the Pet Pines pampering facility was getting the brunt of it, along with Dr. Poole's office, just directly in front of that building. During the transition from, uh, uh, engineer out the easement through there, that's a utility easement, it's not a drainage easement. And so it created some problems with the city trying to enforce some regulations there. And we learned that, uh, we had very little enforcement, um, authority. We did speak with Mr. Wright, uh, to ask him to make some changes to lessen the burden on the Pet Pines. Uh, he was not willing to do everything that we asked, but he, he did do some things, but it did still leave a problem for Dr. Poole and for the Pet Pines facility. Um, since that time, there have been several occasions during, uh, rain events where they have fought back water and, and had some problems. That problem still exists today. Uh, there are problems that exist like that in several places of the city. Um, but we are, this one creates a challenge because it's all on private property and the utility easement that does exist only extends through about the first two-thirds of the area and doesn't extend all the way to one seventy-four. And irregardless, um, we have no access to that easement legally because it's got you, uh, utilities in it and drainage is not established as a utility in Joshua. So that kind of leads us to where we, we are. We've had some opinions about what we could and couldn't do. Uh, we, we looked at securing some assistance for TCEQ, um, to, um, to work, try to work out some of the issues. They sent us, the only, uh, and Terry, you can step in and correct me if I'm wrong here, but according to local government code, the only authority for.
Mike, can you just mute it?
Yeah, I've got real bad internet connection, I'm sorry.
Mike Peacock just got muted.
Oh. Well, so we spoke to TCEQ about participation. They sent us a letter back, um, saying that, uh, they did not see any circumstance in which they would, uh, enter into any civil litigation over this issue. And so it's, uh, I guess unfortunately placed on the back burner while we've dealt with, uh, different elections and, yeah, a few other things. And so now it's really kind of come up to get, get some direction or clarification. My understanding is the city has no authority to establish a drainage channel through there. Um, and even by doing so is questionable whether or not, um, that would be a, uh, an expense allowed by law. And so I guess Terry's going to have to give us some direction on that. Uh, there is a drainage problem there. That is a true fact. Uh, they've been struggling with it for years. More so the Pet Pines and Dr. Poole than Mr. Wright. I'm not aware of any damage that he's incurred, but I am aware of some damage that, uh, Mrs. Wolf has, um, suffered as well as Dr. Poole and his facility.
All right.
If you have questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but they may be better answered by Terry than myself.
Anybody have any questions for Mike at this time? Well, then I'd like to, you know, hear from the people that are involved in this. Julie Poole, Julie, you want to speak up? Mike, through your unmuted Julie.
Okay, you should be good. Hi, okay, hi. Thank y'all for, for taking the time to, uh, to listen to us. And yes, Mike, uh, you know, went over a lot of what is all very true, uh, the, the struggling part that we have dealt with this for many, many years. Uh, Melinda and, uh, Ms. Wolf and myself, uh, my husband is the Dr. Poole. And, uh, we've been in, in Joshua for, you know, about fifteen years of that building and not to ever say that there were not, uh, issues with, uh, kind of, uh, issues with flooding, as in light flooding issues, you know, um, slight backups here and there. That's kind of what we dealt with, uh, early on, uh, in dealing with the, with that particular, with our particular building. But then after the addition of, you know, the Wildwood addition was, was put in, uh, we definitely saw an increase. And I mean like a, like a major level increase in the force of the water. And, um, I included some pictures. I don't know if y'all got to see them, and I have video as well. I think that better kind of establishes that our problem is that we never can see that what was predicted to happen and what actually physically happens are kind of two different things. We were told, you know, by the, the engineering, you know, the engineer that did the development, with the development and the city engineer, that, you know, this is like a hundred-year flood thing that would never happen, but it, it, it physically does happen, kind of to Mike's point. I mean, he knows, he's seen it, y'all, y'all have seen it, it happens, but the force of the water, the direction of the water and the way that it floods all the way down onto one seventy-four, it's not on to one seventy-four as far as green traffic and anything right now, but I can tell you just based on, you know, the, the eighteen to twenty-four months and the increase in water that there has been, it will continue to be a very severe, severe problem. And I know that just by the fourth of how much water we're actually getting into the building and into the front of the property that comes between our properties. And so it definitely has gotten worse over, over this time. It's gone kind of to a whole new level and in, I would say definitely in the last twelve to twenty-four months, it's been, it's exponentially worse. And I guess, uh, even since the developer, uh, paid for the Wildwood developer paid for, uh, us to have the installation of new floors, which was really great of them to do, um, but even since that point, which was less than eighteen months ago, we've already had floods since then. So just that, what it does expense-wise to us financially and to Myron's Good Prey that owns the building, I mean, just in twenty nineteen, it was over sixteen thousand dollars in damages, uh, with restoration companies. That's not new floors, that's not any of that. That's just restoration, drawing water out, uh, the couple of times that it's happened just this year. So from a business perspective, as you can imagine, and that's where we feel it and that's where we hurt, uh, so much is that, you know, constant canceling of patients and days of where we can't see patients. And then not only to mention that, just being that it's a small town and that we are such strong supporters of our community, I mean, there is not a patient that comes in that does not say, you know, well, I know what the city needs to do to fix that problem. And that's kind of something that we hear constantly too, kind of puts us in a precarious situation, you know, because we don't want, we don't want to talk bad about the, the city or anything like that at all. Um, and so, but it kind of hurts when it's like, well, why aren't y'all doing this? Or why aren't y'all doing that? Or why isn't the city doing this? And we deal with that, you know, every single time that a flood happens. So operationally, financially, it's just, we take a hit every single time that it happens and have, and have for, for years. And, and, um, and so I just appreciate y'all listening to us and knowing that, uh, we know, being there as long as we have, how bad things have gotten and that truly, truly, and if you could see some of the video, you would see is, it is bad. When people are stopping off on the side of the road and we're not there and videoing it and putting it on Facebook, it's a bad problem. So thank y'all for, for listening, and if you have any questions, other questions for me, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Okay. Any questions right now for Julie?
Uh, Julie, this is Scott Kimble.
Hi, Scott.
Just out of curiosity, the part of the building that the water's coming in from, is it part of, that part of the building that's between you and Mr. Wright's building?
No, it is not. It is, it's in between.
Outside?
Yeah, it's in between the three buildings, flowing down from in between the three buildings.
When my daughter had rented that building, uh, for Earlberg Preparatory Academy, I'd, I worked out in that yard when the grass was four feet tall, cutting it and all that stuff. Are, are the sandbags that he placed there still there?
It'd be which level of sandbag? We've had multiple, multiple layers of sandbags, so usually, and, and the city's been great about that too. They brought it, brought us out some, uh, just this most recent flood, uh, that we had, uh, in the late part of the spring. But, um, there's many levels of sandbags that are there, yeah, because we're constantly having to use the sandbags.
But, but are there sandbags here that Mr. Wright placed?
Uh.
Those still in place?
I couldn't speak one hundred, with one hundred percent accuracy that they are there. Um, I want to say yes, probably. You're not speaking of the berm, right? You're speaking of the sandbags.
Yes, I'm, I'm talking about the sandbags. I, I know the berm was there to redirect the water and we were still having flooding issues in the building, so more sandbags were placed. And I was just wondering if, if that had increased the flow into your billing area or not.
Can you hear, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Sid and Myra. Uh, yeah, I mean, we've had a lot of dirt work done. We had a trench dug, where you have a little berm, uh, that we put in, and, uh, the water still came over that. So that's when the city brought the, the sandbags out. And we put those up.
And I know that.
We did that, it wasn't Mr. Wright, it was, it was the, the sandbags from the city.
From the city. And the, and the, uh, and I know that Sandy did have, or Mr. Wright's building, it did even just this past spring, she had, uh, because the same restoration guys that came out went over and gave her a quote, uh, to get her, the water out of her building as well, just this past spring from the most recent flood. So, um, and then we re, and then we redid the bags again.
And when Julie says sixteen thousand, that was just our out-of-pocket. That didn't, the restoration, luckily, our insurance paid for some of that, so.
Let me stop you there. Not everybody knows who you are and you haven't submitted, uh, a card. Could you just state your name and address and where you've been in this equation?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, uh, my name is Sid Pruitt, it's my wife, Myra. Uh, we live at, uh, one zero four one seven County Road ten sixteen, uh, Burnison, and we own the building.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, go ahead, Myra, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wonder if anybody knows who was speaking.
Okay, no, I was just saying what Julie mentioned about the sixteen thousand, that was just two thousand and nineteen, and that was not, and we did have, luckily, insurance did pay for a lot of the restoration.
In one of the floods.
Right.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Right next, we have Melinda Wolf to speak. Melinda, check your mic and see if you're turned on.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, you can hear me now, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to read from a statement, I'm trying to just be as concise as possible. Um, "My husband and I purchased the property at six oh nine North Broadway in two thousand and nine for our business, The Pines Pet Pampering. We're a pet care facility, um, that we provide boarding, daycare and grooming services, um, in the city of Joshua, which we have for the last ten years. Um, so I'd like to provide you a brief history of our issues with the stormwater runoff. So for the first, uh, six years that we were there, we operated without any flooding issues whatsoever. In September of two thousand and fifteen, however, a large berm over three hundred feet long was installed behind our property in a continuous line from Main Street all the way down to our property line. The berm diverted historical flow of a water course, water coming from underneath Main Street and at an underdrain. After the berm was installed, we began experiencing flooding and erosion off and on. Um, I requested, as did my attorney, that the city enforce its code ordinances such as section twelve, article four of chapter thirteen. Both the city manager and the assistant city manager assured me that the issue would be resolved if the berm remained, and still does. Over the next two years, the altered path of the stormwater created a ravine behind my property, resulting in erosion and constant repairs and fencing replacements. However, when the Wildwood pre-development on Main Street began in two thousand and eighteen, we began experiencing a new and extreme intensity. The volume of the water and the velocity of the water was unprecedented. Um, it was quite literally and does get to be a red roaring rapids, which I'm sure many of you have seen a video of. Um, at one point, the, the flooding reached fourteen inches high on our fence, and for the first time, it flooded the inside of our building. I spoke with the assistant city manager, who once again assured me that the city would address the stormwater runoff issue, but that first, I needed to grant the city an easement in order to install a drainage system. I agreed to that, and he said that the city would draft up an easement plan for me to review. Three months went by, a draft was never presented, and on January twenty-second of two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Peacock emailed me and directed me to hold off on granting the city an easement because it was not needed, as a drainage system was being implemented along the west side of Main Street that would resolve the issue or relieve the issue, sorry. By mid-April of last year, the flooding volume and the velocity of the water increased with every rainstorm, and every time it rained, we were left with red mud that was six inches thick throughout our property. By mid-May, we were facing safety and liability issues with clients. We began having foundation issues at the rear of our building, water was seeping up through our floors. Over the last five years, I, I have communicated with city management with countless phone calls, meetings, and as the record that I have of over thirty emails back and forth shows, the city has made assurances time and time again that it never followed through on, and in many cases contradicted. As development has increased on Main Street and the stormwater runoff and flooding issues have increased to the point that we have seriously considered moving our business elsewhere to another city, solving the Main Street stormwater runoff is not a matter of private benefit, rather a public benefit to the city, its residents, and the patrons of businesses as a whole. We would like to request that this issue be considered and added to the next city council meeting, and we thank you for your time."
Anybody have any questions for Melinda?
Hi, Melinda, Jerry Moore here, just a quick question if you don't mind, just kind of help with the timeline.
Sure.
At what point, when was the berm installed? Do you know what year that was installed?
That was in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
September of two thousand and fifteen.
And I saw some, some notations and such, y'all had added a fence. When was the fence added?
Then who added a fence?
At your property, was there a fence added?
In two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's four rainfall in these past two years, so you're stating that this runoff is not related to the amount of rainfall that we had? And, and where, where exactly is the city, kind of, kind of, help me out, help me where the city is to be, be involved here on the, on this private aspect?
That would bend to you in the emails back and forth between me and Josh Jones and Mike Peacock, so that you could see the different, um, plans or assurances that were made that then never came through or were contradicted, I, I mean, from one email to the next.
Okay. All right, I'll try to.
Anybody else have any other questions? I guess I've got one. So really prior to two thousand and fifteen, and you did not experience any flooding issues?
No.
So basically, the flooding issue started when Mr. Wright put in the berm.
Correct.
Okay. And the city is, is trying to work with Mr. Wright, and I'm, I'm sure with y'all, but why is it the city's responsibility when Mr. Wright put in the berm on his private property? Now, I'm not saying that was legal, but where is the city's involvement come in with that?
Well, according to your ordinance about, and, uh, putting man-made, um, can you get me that folder, please, that has the ordinances in it? I, really, just your, your own ordinances about erecting, um, man-made structures that would alter the course, uh, or the flow of a water course?
We have.
I mean, this is what this one says. It says, "The property owner shall keep and maintain the part of the water course within the property reasonably free of trash, debris, excessive vegetation and other man-made or unnatural obstacles that would significantly retard the flow of water through the water course." And when the engineer, the city engineer, met with us several times, he referred to that flow of water from Main Street down our property lines as a water course.
Mike, you have any information on that?
Yeah, I think the information she's giving you is correct. It does meet that definition. The difference came, however, though, is that ordinance is trumped by the local government code, which only allows the city civil litigation for recourse of drainage issues. And also in that litigation, it mandates that TCEQ must be a participant, and they have thus far declined. So we, we couldn't even file litigation against Mr. Wright to remove that because the local government code trumps that ordinance unless TC signed on to it, and they have refused. So we, we pretty much have no recourse to make him take that down.
Mike, did, can I ask a question? Uh, did the, did TC, did TCEQ, when you said that they, you know, didn't want to be involved in all of that stuff, what was their take on all of the dirt being in the water? Because that was also a difference too, from, you know, because she had the same problem that we had, that the continual levels of dirt. I mean, that's the whole reason why Wildwood.
Right. They, they, when we sent the letter after, um, we'd been in correspondence with them multiple times about, um, each time y'all had problems and they'd been at a few times to inspect the erosion stuff and, uh, at, at Wildwood. And so when we, we learned of that and that the problems were ongoing and that we had been unsuccessful getting Mr. Wright to, uh, to, that we even tried to get an extension of the easement where they were going to put a water line or a sewer line, and the developer was going to install a drainage channel, but he refused that easement. So then we reached out to them because civil litigation was our only option, and directly asked, would y'all participate? And the local representative from TCEQ in the Fort Worth office, uh, sent a response back that they, he knew of no, um, circumstance that they would become involved in civil litigation on this issue. He didn't give a reason why, he just said no. And so that being the case, it was, we've, uh, we've, we've also, you know, we've had text dot, increase the capacity by cleaning out the drainage. We've increased some capacity where water was coming over Main Street, going across Orico's property and then sheet flowing into Pet Pines. We tried to get engineering done where we could channel all of the water down Main, bring it up the other side of one seventy-four and take out that tunnel, but that wasn't possible with topography. And we've had the engineer draw up several options. We just haven't been able to get the support from the state to bring any action. And then there's this issue of public funds, um, that, that we've grappled with. And unfortunately.
May, may I?
The problem still exists and, and it's going to exist until something, till somewhere somebody gives and something's done.
Mayor Holler.
That's my opinion.
All right, go ahead.
Mayor Holler.
Go ahead.
To finish answering, to finish answering your question about why I have thought that the city, uh, would play a role in alleviating the runoff issue, it, simply just due to what the city has told me. Um, I mean, I have an email here from Josh Jones from October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, where he says, "You'll need to have the property surveyed, adding the easement and file the document at the county. Once that's in place, when manpower and weather allow, we will make improvements between your property and Dr. Poole's, um, as we discussed when this issue initially arose." And that's just one example. I mean, there's many, many emails that, that tell me what the city is going to do to alleviate the issue. Um, and we, along with the pools, have been willing to do whatever we need to do in order to, um, work together and with the city's help, um, get something done to handle the water coming from Main Street. Um, our biggest issue, I think, is that when the Wildwood development began, its pre-development, we were getting flooded with inches and inches and inches of red silt and mud, and that was, that was just a very difficult time. Um, but since then, all of the water and the volume and the velocity has created new channels. But since then, all of the water and the volume and the velocity has created new channels coming down from there. And a lot of this is due to what the Wildwood developers do, which is make that channel on the west side of Main Street very large, wider and deeper on the other side of that underdrain. So there's just a huge volume of water coming now that was not coming prior to two thousand and eighteen. And so it's just the severity of the issue. It's the, it's the amount of water and the velocity that it's coming at that is making things not able to operate for us and the pools. And so it leaves us with, you know, looking at choices of what do we do? Where do we go? How can we operate our businesses?
I've got a question. Two thousand and eighteen.
We've got a question for Josh.
Pre-development, and I'm just curious, in the last, say, nine months, because now Wildwood has got their retention, detention pond put in and others. Have you seen with the rains, is it just as bad or is it not as bad as it was? Because like I said, I understand, two thousand and eighteen, they had big hills that were pushing a lot of the detention pond. Was it working?
Yes, we, we have videos just within the last, I would say since last October. But one of the other issues that I don't know if anyone's brought up, it can, we can have a rain event and we'll be having this flooding coming for days and days, sometimes five or six days after the rain stopped. Then it will dry up, okay, and then we can hurry and get our grass mowed. And then all of a sudden, there will be suddenly a rush of water come. And it's the detention pond letting out, and it will continue and we never know when it's going to happen. And here we go again, and it's a big rush that's coming. And then it will do that for days, and it hasn't even rained for two weeks.
Mike, does that sound...
I'm sorry, guys.
...that works? Mike Peacock is, because I would think the detention pond fills up and then it gradually lets the water out, doesn't it?
That's, that's the way it's designed to, is it collects a certain amount of water and then it holds it and only allows a certain amount out. It's never supposed to hold water. And if it did, my guess would be, you never say never, but something may have occluded the drain flow that was cleaned out that then caused the rest of it to empty. I don't, I don't know. I wasn't there to see it. I could check with Chris and see if he's aware of some issue, but I'm not aware that it's happened a few days later, but I, I don't think that it's out of the realm of possibility if something were to occlude. It's just a concrete drainage pipe that comes out of that, so it's possible that it could have been blocked and then unclogged.
Mike, did you have a question you were wanting to...
Yeah, yes, sir. I had a question. I guess I'll direct it at Josh about city ordinances. So the berm was erected in two thousand and fifteen. Is that what I understand, Melinda?
Yes.
Okay, so as of two thousand and fifteen, where were we at with the revision of the ordinance around that time period? And did the ordinance have anything in it that said that that erosion guard that he, that he constructed was illegal at that time? And if so, have we changed anything since two thousand and fifteen in that ordinance? So I guess what I'm saying is, is where are we at in that ordinance versus where it was before two thousand and fifteen when he erected that? Because I think that's where we need to head with this. I think the city needs to find out how he got away with changing the water flow because it's against the law to change the water flow on any property, whether the ordinance says it or not. The state of Texas says you can't change the water flow onto another person's property. And that's just, that's just the normal law. And so I don't understand why we're, we're having such a problem with this. I think it needs to be fixed.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that state law trump the local government that you were talking about, Mike Peacock?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mike?
The local government code is state law and it trumps city ordinance. And in that part, it requires civil litigation, doesn't, doesn't allow for anything else. It's not criminal. We can't cite them. It's civil. We can't bring civil action without TCEQ to participate, and they have refused.
Wow, okay.
If I can add one thing too, you're exactly right that state law does prohibit increasing the flow across somebody else's property. That's a violation of Texas Water Code, a private cause of action between neighboring property owners. So neighboring property owners always have the opportunity, the option to sue an adjacent landowner, for example. If they're increasing the flow of water across property, the city doesn't have any rights in that. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a let's be between neighboring private property owners. And that's been where we've had some of our issues. We can't jump in and say, "We will do that for you." The state law says, unless it's our property, and it's not our property. So that's where, and I think Mike periodically kind of stated what the issues are here. Even, even if an ordinance provision is, is a violation, our problem with an ordinance provision is our ordinance provision basically says, we'll issue a fine against somebody and they write a check to the city. So that doesn't really address the issue of changing the flow of the water. It's just that every time it occurs, we can issue a citation. If we, even if we had an ordinance that were applicable, it doesn't address private property owners doing anything. It just gives you a municipal court citation that gets prosecuted then.
That was Terry Welch, our city attorney. Thanks to anybody that knows who that was that was speaking. So I've got a question to the participants there that, you know, the three in question. Has anybody filed litigation against each other or the Wildwood? If that's where everybody agrees that that's created the issue, has anybody filed with Wildwood litigation-wise to battle this out, to get that changed?
Well, I mean, I can say, we've been told that Wildwood isn't untouchable. So, and that y'all have already handled it on your end, that you've already communicated with Wildwood and that, like, that's, that was a dead end. So then, when, it's like there's all these years of communication of saying, "The city plays a role, the city plays a role," and then the revelation that you don't have an easement becomes a, woo, okay, hands off. We don't have to do it now. And so then it was now pit the neighbors against each other and make them sue each other civilly. That's what we were told that kind of to do.
I think it sounds like the state has laid out upon us where we can't get involved as such without the TCEQ, and they're not going to participate. So then it reverts back to, you know, amongst the parties that if Mr. Wright created an issue and then it got enhanced by Wildwood, Wildwood would say, "No, it's Mr. Wright," and Mr. Wright would say, "No, I just corrected my own," and vice versa. So yeah, it's a quid pro quo there. But at what point, has anybody, you know, has anybody got a solution outside of city funds where the party's involved? I've gotten with Wildwood, said, "Wildwood, I need you to build this."
Melinda, you want to speak to that?
There have been many solutions presented to me by the city. There were solutions presented to me by Mr. Vericchio, and I have communications, you know, through emails from him as well to show all of those. But what, what it came down to, and I can look at the, back at the date here, but what it came down to was Vartex saying that they met every obligation and every, that they met exactly what the city required of them. They did exactly what they needed to. And when I asked city management specifically about those things that were discussed that would happen, that Vartex was going to be a part of, and now Phil is saying, "Sorry, we're not doing that because we've talked to the city and we have met the city's requirements." And Mike said, Mr. Peacock, that that was true, that they met every requirement set forth from the city and were only required to take all of Wildwood's drainage, all of that retention pond let out, all of that. They were only required to take it and stop directly at the underdrain. That's the problem. And so originally throughout the emails that I have and the communications I have, what was discussed was continuing drainage, a drainage system on the west side of Main Street that would continue down to 174 along Main Street or to get the water runoff, all the stormwater to 174 without it going through, through private property. But that, that fell through. However, we have worked hard to try to come to sort of solution and see what the city could do to help us. And we had a meeting in October with Mr. Jones. The engineer was supposed to be there, but he was not. So it was Josh Jones, the pools and the Pruitt's, and Mr. Wright. And Mr. Wright agreed to grant the city an easement. A drainage easement. All involved agreed to do that, to give the city an easement for drainage and if the city would help in getting something done about this runoff. And that's where, that's the last thing that we, or that I got communicated about any of this was last October when we had that meeting. And that's all I know so far. And that's why we're here, is to maybe try to get this on the city's agenda to, to see what can be done.
I think that's where we tried to get Wildwood involved. Mr. Wright would have given the easement back when Wildwood first got started. Then I think the issue would have been taken care of. But unfortunately, he wasn't willing to give an easement at that point in time. Now it's a little bit late because Wildwood's already spent all the money and done it the way the engineer drew it up if he couldn't go through the easement on Mr. Wright's property. So, you know, I think they were willing to do something at the point in time they could do it, but once they had to go on and get going and Mr. Wright wasn't giving them the easement, then they didn't have any choice but to do it the way the engineers drew it up, which is supposed to take care of it. Now, one question I've got is I went back to Google Earth and looked. You can go back, you can download that to your desktop. You can look at every year from nineteen ninety-five till the current day. And before your building was built, you could see where the water did sheet flow over your property. But it's interesting, about two thousand and fifteen, when I guess Mr. Wright put that berm in, the ravine that you mentioned, all of a sudden it's propped up. And if you look at every year, that ravine has gotten bigger and bigger. You can't see the actual ravine, but you can see the trees. And it comes from Main Street down and then right behind your property. So I still, you know, it appears that something changed in two thousand and fifteen that created that ravine. And it appears that that was when Mr. Wright put in the berm that created that flow to where it came down from Main Street and then crossed the back of your property. You know, I think what the city's trying to do, a lot of times we get in these situations and, you know, we try to pull it back. We're not always successful, and sometimes we think we can do more than we actually can. And I think that's what the case is here. I think we tried to do this. If Mr. Wright would have allowed Wildwood to have put in the easement back in two thousand and eighteen, we wouldn't be sitting here talking today. But unfortunately, he didn't. I think some of the other issues that would run into is the legalese of the law. I know, Melinda, when they talked to you about an easement, we were thinking that a utility easement would be something that we could use. But come to find out, we can't put drainage in a utility easement. So we weren't able to go down that road. So I think, I agree, it's taken a long time, but I think we've been trying to do different things. Then we've gotten in with the, the TCEQs have come into the picture. I think, you know, there's been some complaints. We acted on them. We tried to work with them. And as Mr. Peacock said, they have to be involved if we try and sue somebody in a civil court due to a drainage issue. Well, when they say they won't be involved, that's where the ties are. So that's something else, you know, where we're going to try and work, get something going. But I think the issue comes down to what happened in two thousand and fifteen. And that was probably resolved to put everything back to like it was in two thousand and fifteen. Because I think that ravine, it's going to probably take work to get that cleared out. Because like I said, that's, there weren't any trees or any structure on there. And now that's just gotten bigger and bigger every year. And unfortunately, the city stands are sort of tied. We can't, there's only limited situations where we can go out and spend money. Quite honestly, I mean, I realize it's a big number to you guys, but the sixty to eighty thousand dollars is a number to the city as well.
Okay, I got a question, Joe. You know, is everybody under the same consensus that the main issue is the berm? That was built wrongly?
Mike, you got a thing on that, Mike Peacock?
It's, it's too late for that. I mean, with Wildwood...
I'm going to ask Mike Peacock a question. I'll come back to you in a minute, Melinda.
I think that the removal of the berm will help the situation. But I believe that because of the flows from, from Wildwood, even though somewhat controlled, I don't know that that's going to make an impact that it would have made then. There's also a part two to this. This, all this water empties out into Text Dot right away. And then it goes down a piece and then crosses under 174 through a culvert and goes into the city of Burleson. And if you've ever noticed driving through the drainage channels in that part of Burleson that empty out onto Mountain Valley Boulevard, they're full of trees and brush and whatnot. Even if that berm goes away and even if we build a swell of some sort to move that water and to keep it out of those buildings, it's going to puddle at 174 because it has nowhere to go. And then it crosses into Mountain Valley, crosses the streets there. And it's, it's eroded water back there so bad that last week we were out there dealing with a twelve-inch gas line that had been opened up from erosion. And so it's, there's a significant amount of water that is going to bottleneck even at 174 that is going to be probably the next step of this to, even if we resolve the issue between these buildings, some, Text Dot's going to have to partner up and do something to move that water through there.
Have we had any conversations?
I don't think simply taking the berm away at this point is going to solve the problem. It might help in some medium rain events, but the heavy rain events, and I'm no engineer or hydraulic person, but my assumption is, is that it probably will still can be, would continue to be an issue.
Have you had any conversations with Text Dot on what they would be willing to do? Mike Peacock?
Well, Text Dot came through and cleaned out the bar ditches, and they'll do that. You know, we can schedule and have that done. It increases a little bit of capacity, but it doesn't increase it enough. And then when it crosses through their drainage and goes into Burleson, now you've got to work out stuff with Burleson. And so far, it's not really made their list of priorities to clean out either. We talked to them the same time we talked to Text Dot, and we can reach out to them again. But something's going to have to be done there as well. I think to get a permanent fix to this, we're going to need several players in the room and a plan to address catching it at Main, containing it across these business properties, getting it under 174, move it across through Mountain Valley and get it into Village Creek. Ultimately, that's where it goes.
Amen. Thank you, Mike.
Melinda, you got a question? You wanted to say something? Melinda, will?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that it's, it's too late to think that removing the berm is going to change much now. I mean, this has been five years of a new path of water created, a ravine. And no one, I think, knows exactly how deep it is because there is so much brush in it back there, coming down that property line of Orco. So at this point, it's, it's a, it's a whole different ballgame than it was before. Before, it was a sheet flow and it dispersed in a very wide, you know, sheet. And some of that obviously went... and it dispersed in a very wide, you know, sheet. And some of that obviously went down that where is now behind Sandy's quilt shop and over to that side through that concrete parking lot. So when he put the berm in, it condensed all of that water that was a sheet flow to be way moved over to the south. Um, and so now it's just a completely different landscape.
So what are our options for taking all the water on the west side of, of Main Street, Mike? What would the options be for Kristen and, and the city department to, to widen the ditches and, and increase the water flow down the west side of, of Main Street? Do we have that option?
Mute.
Mike, you're muted.
Uh, no, I'm not.
This mute button is killing me.
Which Mike?
Was the question directed at me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, in general, yeah, in general, what are our options to, to try to divert more water on the west side of Main Street, basically?
It's very limited because it begins to go uphill just as it passes where this culvert is. So we, we looked at doing that. We even tried to put it, uh, we were going to widen the ditches and increase capacity on the, uh, the west side of Main. Um, and then of course that's where the sewer line is now, but there's a couple of uphill jogs in there. And it, and we couldn't get it there. We couldn't make it work. So we, we increased the capacity where we could. But all that does is hold more water to stand it down through that channel. It slows it down a little bit, but not nearly enough. It's, it's, it's just, it's just too much water. It's, it's, I mean, there's, I, I've seen, I, I've seen pictures and I've driven into that parking lot. And it's, it's been a foot deep in the parking lot. And so it's, uh, it's a, it's a challenge that, that I think at this point is going to take several, several entities coming together to figure this out. And
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Mike, I got a question. Why can't, why can't this get started? Let's appoint somebody to start getting in touch with all the entities and, and see if we can have a meeting. I mean, it's not going to get started unless somebody starts it.
We've, we've talked to, of course, the property owners. We've talked to Mr. Wright. We've talked to Burleson. We've talked to Tech Stop. I mean, there's not anybody involved that doesn't know that it's an issue. The problem is.
You said, we gotta get them. You said we need to get them all together in one room. Why can't we?
Well, I think that if, if, if we figure out a funding source, then I think we're going to have to talk to Tech Stop. We're going to have to talk to Burleson and we're, there's easements that are going to have to be acquired and, and it's drainage is, is a huge challenge. It's, it's become such a, a big deal. The state says they own the, own the surface water. Federal government says they own the surface water. You know, it, it took us five years to get permitting done for improvements into Village Creek to help get the water in there. And, and so it's, 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 it's just a mess to navigate through. And I don't, I don't know how to get TCEQ to become more involved. I've always kind of thought that was their role to regulate this stuff, but they seem to not. I mean, they, they flat out said they were not going to get involved. We can approach them again. I'm happy to do that. I don't know what, I don't know if the answer will be different this time. Uh, I do know that Mr. Rayford, who initially sent me the response, uh, has been reassigned and there's a new director of the Fort Worth office. I'm happy to reach out to them if that's what y'all want us to do, to see if we can, uh, trigger some conversation through them.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Because this problem is not going to, it's not going to get better. The more development up on Main Street, the more runoff we're going to have, and it's just going to get worse.
You know, I, I, I think there, there may be some discussions that we can have. We can certainly have that with them again. Maybe we reach out to some of our state reps and see if they can maybe talk to somebody at TCEQ and maybe get, get us a higher up person to take a look at it. All of those are possibilities. I'm happy to do it if you're direction, but we're, but we still have to at some point address whether or not the city can spend money. And I don't think that's.
Is there any grant money out there we can apply for, for helping this out?
There's grant money available for certain things. The one that we have now through the EPA is a, is a, is a partial match of 4555. But they're, they're very specific when it comes to a drainage and most of those go through TCEQ and the Water Control Board. And right now they're focused on waterways that are impaired, such as the Trinidad River and some of those. I don't know about local grants at, at this level, but we can certainly, we've got some grant reps that we can reach out to and inquire.
Mike, Jerry Moore has a question for you. Jerry?
Okay.
And Mike, let's, I, I think the approach we may need to go at this point, because TCEQ has to be incremental, you know, they, they have to participate and get involved to, to kind of help get this resolved. Is to get Terry Welch and get that office involved, to send a little bit more formality to it, to request a, uh, you know, a response. I, I think, you know, I think it actually need to go to just a little bit more assistance from TCEQ to get them to kind of help, hey, get in the middle of this and find out, hey, how much does the city need to participate? What do they need to do? What do the landowners need to do? They're the ones that really have the expertise to be able to kind of help guide and direct, which is the missing piece right now.
Terry, is that something?
Okay.
Put together as far as Terry Welch?
Pardon?
Yeah. Could you put together some kind of letter maybe to the TCEQ? Maybe put a little more weight behind it, find me the standard or whatever and see if we can get them more involved?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be happy to do whatever I need to do, write letters and try to get attention. I think going, going through our legislators might be, have a little more clout, to be honest with you, perhaps.
Well, I'll be glad to call, uh, Mr. Berg, Wayne Burns. I'll throw him and he's helped us out on a couple of other matters. I'll be glad to give him a call. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
How does that affect Main Street? Does it become really hazardous, I guess? Does Mike know how it affects?
Mike Angela's asking, Mr. Rick, are there issues that this water is doing to Main Street? Are we having any issues with Main Street with the additional water?
Most of the work comes along Main Street, um, most commonly stays within the channel. The detention pond that was built in Wildwood, it is designed for that capacity and it, it timely releases it with the exception of maybe the issue that happened back what Mrs. Wolf spoke to earlier. But you know, while, while with that development, of course, all that engineering is done based on build out, final completion. So of course they're building houses very quickly over there, but that detention pond is designed to deal with that water from that property. Uh, and I, according to Steve and the engineers that have looked and even an independent engineer hired by the people on Yvonne confirmed that the engineering is sound and is working as, as it's supposed to. But I, where I, I don't see that it's causing damage to the road per se, other than just traffic and nor, normal wear and tear. So I, I, I wouldn't say that we're having trouble with the road as a result of it.
Anybody else have any other questions? Well, I would say, uh, let's see what we can do, work with Terry and Mike and get the, the letters to the TCEQ. I will call Mr. Wayne Burns and let's put it on our work session for next month and just get it back together and see what we've been able to accomplish and see where we can go from there. Uh, it sounds like we're still pushing off and not trying to do something. But again, we've got an issue with some of these public funds, uh, to fix our private properties. And we have to navigate that. If we can do these things and get people involved and help get this thing fixed and we're not necessarily having to spend a lot of city funds, that's our ultimate goal. So, uh, is everybody okay with that or is there something else to do something different? All right?
Yes.
I appreciate, uh, Melinda, you think on the call tonight, Julie, uh, the Pruitt's, thank y'all. We're, we're, we haven't given up, but it's just, it's very time consuming and things have been changing. That's not all I can say, but, uh, we're going to still work and we'll get together next month. Like I said, I'll get with the, our state representative and like I said, he's been very helpful in some other matters, but I've called him directly. And we'll see if he can get us going something here. And I appreciate y'all's input tonight.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right. Number three. Anybody have any questions regarding any of the regular session agenda items? Not, uh, with a public forum, uh, anybody sent in any cards or anything?
No, sir. I do have two that just sent on in for, um, the work zone.
Okay. All right. We'll talk to them when we get to that point. Uh, we're going to introduce our newest Joshua police officer, Sean Fuller, but, uh, the police chief wanted to do that when it was more open. He'd come in and talk to everybody and shake hands. So we'll try to do that next month. Next item is the consent agenda, or consent agenda tonight. We have the approval of the minutes, the city council meeting held on the 21st and ratifying the city manager's approval of the development agreement between the city of Joshua and Joshua Development Company regarding page three B of the Joshua Meadows Edition. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda or a motion to separate the items out.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Jerry Moore to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? All right. Motion carries seven zero. Next, I'm going to open up a public hearing on a request for a zoning change for single family residential R1, the single family residential large lot, R1L on a two acre tract of land located 109 Littlebrook Road, legally known as Lot One R3 Littlebrook Estates. An addition of the city of Joshua, Johnson County, Texas. Who's going to be doing the staff presentation? Terry?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, uh, the, uh, property owners of 109 Littlebrook have submitted a, uh, a, a zoning change application requesting their current zoning of residential, single family be changed to a residential, single family large lot. Uh, by changing their zoning classification would allow them to have a, uh, stable and a horse. The, uh, uh, current zoning ordinance allows for the, uh, private stable or a barn in the agricultural and the single family large lot, uh, districts. So, uh, by, um, allowing the, uh, or having the, I think it's a requesting by, by, uh, changing their classification so that they can, uh, be able to have the, uh, stable and the horse. The, uh, the change, the proposed rezoning request is in, uh, compliance with our future land use map. Back, back on June 1st, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zoning change and has made a recommendation of, of approval to council. And the city staff has also recommended approval.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, owner's presentation, Danica or Raymond, would you like to speak at the point of time?
Yes. Hi, we're both present. Um, I, we just wanted to give a little background. We're looking to, we, we actually just recently purchased this home in this neighborhood specifically because it's in a very much agricultural area. All of our neighbors are large lots. Many of them have animals as well. And so we, we do have one horse that we currently board and we'd love for him to be able to come live with us. And so that's why we're seeking this zoning change.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody on the phone or phone line that wants to speak in favor? Anybody against? Uh, don't wait there to be any owners rebuttal. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:35. Now we're going to discuss, consider and take action on the request for the zoning change from the single family R1 to the single family R1L, the two acre tract. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just want to make comment to the owners that, you know, thank you. This is the process, the way it's set up. And we appreciate you going through the process. I know it's tough. But this is what it's about is, you know, we look at a big picture when we do zoning and you look at a lot of different things. We can't narrow down the one specific use per, per parcel. So this is what it's about. And I, I thank you for that.
Yeah, we really appreciate your time and we're very happy to comply. So thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion in to approve my motion.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Robert Purdum, seconded by Mike Keaton to approve the zoning change from single family R1 to the single family residential large lot, R1L at 109 Littlebrook, legally known as Lot One R3 Littlebrook Estates. Is there any further comments? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Good luck and enjoy your horse.
Thank you. We certainly will.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next we'll open up another public hearing at 7:37 on the adoption of a new zoning ordinance to be contained in chapter 14 zoning of the code ordinances of the city of Joshua, Texas, and repealing the existing zoning ordinance in its entirety, currently found in chapter 14 zoning of the city, excuse me, of the code of ordinances of the city of Joshua, Texas. Staff, Aaron? Uh, I'm sorry, Karen?
It's me. Oh, if Aaron wants to handle this, that's okay. I wouldn't do that to him. Mayor and members of the council, it's so good to see you. I'm sorry, we're still, we're still having to do it that way, the way we're doing it, but at least, at least we have technology so that we can. So I'm grateful for that. At our, um, last meeting that we had with you guys, which was on February the 20th, we, um, went into quite a bit of detail about what all we had done as far as any kind of changes to the ordinance. Mayor, um, and council, I'm going to ask you, I can, I can read all of that again, um, the comprehensive part of the staff report, or I can just go to what we have done since that meeting. Okay, let's do it. So, so first of all, I, I appreciate that, um, that we've had as much input on this since the 20th of February so that we could make sure that we make this as close to a perfect document as possible. But you guys all know, no ordinance is going to be perfect. I wish that it was, but as we go through administering this, once it's approved, um, we are going to find, uh, that, that we may have missed some things that we may need to come back and clarify, but that is, that just holds true for any ordinance that gets approved by a city. Back in February, uh, 20th, some of the very specific things that you guys asked us to do was to add a requirement for a planned development district for a manufactured, uh, housing park. Allow site plans unless they're affiliated with a planned development district or a conditional use permit, allow them to be administratively approved. And you agreed that we need to go ahead and leave the fence ordinance as it is. We've done all of that. Hopefully we've answered all of the questions that, uh, you guys haven't had back on the 20th and the comments that we received. We've addressed all of those to my knowledge. Additionally though, there have been some other, there have been some other things that have happened between then and now that, um, that really do warrant some discussion. We have talked to the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission about most of this. They are aware of this whenever they, um, made the recommendation. But part of it has to do with the heritage preservation overlay district. This is something we did not talk about February 20th. And the only reason why we're changing it now is this is the, this is the proper venue. We've been having, I guess, over, over the last several years, there have been a number of rezoning requests in the Main Street area. number of rezoning requests in the Main Street area where all of that property is zoned commercial and people have come in with zoning requests here and there, kinda spotty, to have it rezoned back to single-family residential because they wanna take an existing house and they wanna renovate it and live there. And so, i- it's kinda created a bit of a, of an issue because in, in actuality, now we have residential mixed with non-residential. We had that before, but the residential was non-conforming. We looked at changing the comp plan and rezoning it all back to residential, but then that would make the non-residential non-conforming. So, we did, we came up with the idea, what if we enlarge the heritage overlay district not to where it was to begin with? If you guys recall, prior to, to 2013, it encompassed, the heritage overlay district encompassed almost all of Main Street. And I think the reason why, uh, it did was because, for lack of better terms, this is what I refer to as the, as the old Joshua. This is the, almost like the original Joshua. And then outside of that, um, you had all of the new growth coming in, and I think at the time that it was created, it was done so to, to put the heavier commercial uses out on 174 and allow a mixture really of residential and non-residential, but maybe the commercial uses not being quite as, uh, intense. So, what we're proposing is to enlarge the area and to make some changes to that where, and, and also understand that the houses that are in that particular area certainly do not meet the, um, our minimum house size requirement of eighteen hundred square feet. Most of them are around, you know, nine hundred square feet to a thousand square feet, not most of them, but you have a lot of them. So, mayor, kinda going hand in hand, what you and I had talked about a long time ago about, there's really nothing wrong with mixing residential and non-residential in the heritage overlay district. So, if we enlarge it, we could do that and allow this, but we would also allow it to be a minimum, uh, square footage of nine hundred square feet for a residential house. So, what we are proposing is the following uses are allowed within the HP district in addition to the permitted uses in the underlying commercial district. The caveat to that is, is that in the heritage overlay district, we do have prohibited uses. So, um, this one right here, what we're proposing is single-family residential, a minimum house size of nine hundred. You could have a live-work unit or loft apartment above commercial, bed and breakfast. We did talk to you guys, I think, about this part of it, but we've added to this that we have said, other uses not listed in the prohibited list below may be allowed with an approved conditional use permit. In other words, we may not have hit every use that would be allowed, but what happens if there is a use that might work? It might work. So, it would give the, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council the opportunity to look at that use as it, uh, impacts the surrounding area by way of a conditional use permit, and you guys may find that there may be a non-residential use that's not on the prohibited list, not in the table of permitted uses, but it might work. So, it kinda gives you some latitude to allow that to happen. Uh, so that is the additional change that we have for, for that. As we continued going over this document in preparation for tonight's meeting, between the city staff, the city attorney, the mayor's review of the document, and mayor, thank you for, for all that you put into that. I really appreciate it. There have been several additional revisions that would not require us to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission because really what we're doing is tweaking the information, but the primary area is the table of permitted uses specifically having to do with the supplemental use, uh, regulations not coinciding with the, the actual use. As we continued working in this section, it, it, we decided that it was probably best in, in one particular area that we had a supplemental regulation that applied to every single non-residential use that was on the table of permitted uses and, and for that kinda thing, we just needed to create a section. So, what we did was we took those supplemental uses, we created a section that's called outside storage and display so that any type of non-residential use that's coming in, they'll have to comply with the outdoor storage and display, uh, regulations, which were in your supplemental regulations or your special conditions that you already have on the books today. Um, additionally, and this, this was the big one, and this was the one I think that disappointed me more than anything, is that we were trying really hard to, to help with definitions. So, we have all of these uses, we have tons of new definitions in the ordinance. Do we have definitions for every single use that's in there? No, we do not have definitions for every single use, but we have broad enough definitions that hopefully it will be able to take care of those. But what we did was we added what's called the NAICS. That stands for the North American Industry Classification System. That's kind of an international, or a national code on land uses. We put that in there, we put the hyperlink in there. Every time I would go to the hyperlink, the definition of that, it just, it wasn't adding up to the use, and I was afraid it was gonna just cause more and more and more confusion by having that in there than just doing it the way that we typically do it. So, so I am recommending that we take that out completely. By doing that, we would also have to make an amendment to section five point two. We had a, um, provision in section five point two that explained why we were putting the NAICS designation in there. Wanna change that to read, "For uses not listed within the table of permitted uses, the city administration will review the use to determine if there is a similar use to what is being proposed. If there is no similar use to what is being proposed, the applicant may request that the use be added to the table of permitted uses. The city administration will recommend to the Planning and Zoning Commission the appropriate district or districts that the proposed use should be allowed in. The city council, upon recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, shall have final authority on determining the use and its location." Which is what we do right now, uh, but, but we needed to go ahead and get something in the ordinance that staff could kinda hang their hat on when somebody came in and said, you know, this, this use isn't in here. So, we needed to, to add that to that. Also, as we went through this process, as staff was looking at it, and I'm so, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of the staff because, um, they're not waiting until this thing's adopted to crack it open and look at it. They're looking at it now, which is awesome because they're the ones that are gonna be administering it, they're the ones that need to let us know if there's any kinda glitches. In this particular one, and I think Alice is the one who caught this, and thank you, Alice, for that, under amendments, changes and administrative procedures, which is article three point one point four D, we would need to just tweak the language to read, "Upon receipt of the report and recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of an application to rezone property or to amend the zoning ordinance, if not previously scheduled, the city council shall schedule the application or amendment for public hearing and shall give notice of the time and place of the hearing by one publication in the official newspaper at least fifteen days prior to the hearing." Because, uh, the way that we had it written in there, um, pretty much said that it has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission has to draft their report before you could even publish it in the paper for city council. Well, that could push an application out, uh, an additional thirty days before it ever got to the city council. I, having it written this way, it pretty much streamlines the process, so if, um, if the city wants to do what we refer to as a double notice, meaning that letters go out to surrounding property owners and at the same time, we go ahead and put the published, uh, publication in the newspaper at the same time, um, so that they can, an applicant for a zoning case can get to Planning and Zoning Commission and right after that, go right to city council. So, those are the, those are the big changes that we've made since the last time that we talked. Again, I said it last time, I mean this sincerely. Thank you so much for taking the time to read this, to work on this ordinance. Thanks, everybody who sent in any questions or comments that we needed to address. Terry, uh, has looked at this, he's, he's worked with me on this to make sure that we have done the best job that we can do. Again, I wish I could say it's gonna be a perfect, it's gonna be a perfect document, but I can't make that guarantee because I can't with any ordinance. But this one is probably one of the most comprehensive zoning ordinances in my thirty-three years that I've had the opportunity to help draft, and I think it's one the city is gonna be proud of, and I certainly think that the, um, the, the city staff and your citizens and the development community will be able to read and understand this ordinance a whole lot better than what we have right now. And it's June first meeting of this month, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the new zoning ordinance. I'll answer any questions you all may have.
We'll get to questions in a minute. We have to finish the public hearing first. Uh, does anybody send in anything to speak in favor or against? Uh, therefore, we're gonna have a rebuttal, so I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven fifty-one. Now, we're gonna discuss, consider, take action on the ordinance. Now's the time to ask questions. Uh, Karen, I had one, you just talked about on the historic overlay district, you were gonna increase the size, give them more options. Are these people gonna have to do, jump through any hoops to be able to get, uh, they have to go through all the stuff of the historical preservation society if they wanna make the change that they were outside that area and now they're inside?
The only, you know, really, the only thing is, is if they have, if they're making, you know, falls under that definition of substantial modification to the facade, and that really applies more so to non-residential than it does residential. And so, when they do a remodel, the hope is, is that they will, you know, I mean, if they're gonna change the whole appearance or rebuild the house, then it would probably have to go through the his, uh, the preservation committee because it really needs to be one that adheres to the masonry requirements. It needs to be one that kinda blends in with the area of like the nineteen, I think the early nineteen hundreds is how we have that, uh, written. And so, it's really to try to keep it to blend in, but I think more so than anything, mayor, this is really to try to, um, try to accommodate allowing some mixed uses in that area that, um, you know, there's a saying, if it, if it doesn't, you know, if it, if you can't hear it, see it, or smell it, it's probably okay as a neighbor. And so, so I think that there's enough regulations in place to take care of that, but I don't think they're gonna have to jump through as many, as many hits.
First, we go from it to, you're saying we increased the size of the overlay district?
Yeah. Um, I don't know if you, if anybody has the, do you have a copy of the zoning ordinance? The proposed zoning ordinance?
Page one fourteen is the overlay map. Six point one, six point four. So, do we know where it went from in two?
Yes.
I'm looking at it. Can you tell me where we increased it, what it was before, what it is now?
Okay. I may have to do, I may have to do a shared screen with you, so bear with me, and let me see if I am tech savvy enough to do this.
You can do it.
I don't know. Hold on. Hold on. Let's see. Hold on.
I'm just gonna, just kinda, 'cause I know, you know, just anything, just like, just a little bit here, uh, I mean, I think we're out here.
I'm just gonna have to, I don't know if I have the latest copy of, I might have it right here. Let me see. From twenty thirteen. It's, okay, it's hard to see that. So, can you see this on your screen?
Not yet.
Uh-oh. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay. So, so in, prior to twenty, prior to twenty thirteen, um, it encompassed almost the entire length of Main Street. I mean, it, almost the entire length. In twenty thirteen, it was changed to only encompass this area right here, but...
Are there any street names over there? I can't...
Oh, okay. Hold on. Let me see if I can enlarge it. Does that help? Can you see that better?
Okay. So, it looks like we're a little ways past Twelfth Street. That was where it was before.
Now, this is where it is right now. It, it, it took into account properties that, of course, properties can split all the time, but it took into account property lines, and what we're doing is keeping those same property lines, but then what we're proposing after that is to have it, uh, really be more affiliated with streets as the boundaries. But Main Street...
Personally, I, I don't like that. I think we, we've gone through so much grief and that's why we reduced it. Uh, we haven't had anybody really asking for commercial up there. Everybody's been wanting to keep it residential, and I don't know, I just hate seeing people have to go through all this extra stuff, uh, when at the current time, I don't think that's necessary. At a later date, maybe we do have to increase it, but I would be against increasing that and requiring people go through additional, uh, going through the heritage overlay district and all of that when they're definitely outside of that zone now. That's the reason we reduced it back in two thousand thirteen.
Well, but, but mayor, what's happened though is that through the last several years, in this, kinda in this same, okay, well, let me just give you an example. I'm gonna give you a real example of just what just happened not too long ago with, with the gentleman on Main Street. So, he bought a house, the house is nine hundred square feet, it's not in the heritage overlay, all of that property is already zoned commercial, and he wants to renovate this house, and he's already lost his grandfather status. So, even going in and rezoning it back to single-family residential doesn't help him because he's gotta comply with all the ordinances. So, that nine hundred square foot house, he's now gonna have to enlarge it up to eighteen hundred square feet.
Right.
Because that's what the ordinance requires because of the grandfathered status. So, we were trying, because the city council has approved so many, um, so many different zonings, and I wasn't involved in it, I'm, I'm sorry, that was, Lisa was doing like little ones back there. I'm not saying anything wrong with that, but what that told me with the city council approving those zonings on those little pieces of parcels throughout this area, it told me that the council was okay to see a mixed use because next door to them, the property could put a commercial use there now because it's own commercial. So...
The area, we stopped it. So, the area now where we're increasing that property is all commercial zone right now?
That's, the majority of it is zoned commercial, yes.
I thought we had switched it back to single-family. I was, that's why I was against doing this. It's commercially, we're getting, where they can do single-family, I would be okay with that.
And Alice, I don't know if the zoning map is, um, where everybody can see that. I can try to put it up on the screen. Um, yeah, I don't know if it's the latest and greatest, but, but if you remember, um...
I'm good.
Okay. 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 But, but yes, uh, the majority of that land is zoned commercial.
Okay. And so, this would allow mixed use and that's why, and it would allow people with smaller houses to, to most retain that, retain that.
If you're doing, if you're doing major modifications, if you're just rehavin' a house. The issue here is, it's either jump through the hoop or going to the area, it's renovation overlay district, or not being able to rebuild the house, because now, if it's not in the heritage overlay, you have this minimum square footage, they can't be, you have setback issues and a bunch of other things. It's really the least cumbersome of the issue. I mean, of the heritage overlay district. That, that, I was, that answered my question, thank you.
No, no, the heritage overlay district. Anything else? Anything else? Uh, yes, I have three questions for you, Karen. Yes, I have three questions for you, Karen. On two point four point three C. Can you give me the five?
Okay, two point four-
Point three C.
Where it says make recommendations to the city council concerning the rezoning of land?
Oh, no, I'm two point four point three membership, and I'm, I'm going back on page six.
I'm on page six.
What I've got is says each commissioner shall be appointed-
Oh, beginning October first.
Right. And no member shall serve more than four consecutive terms or eight years, whichever is less, and may be reappointed by the council for additional terms. That last part of that is not in two point five point three for the CBA. Why would, why would that be in there? If they're limited to the eight term, or four terms or eight years, and may be reappointed by the council for additional terms?
Councilmember, that could have been something that was carried over from the other ordinance, under what our current regulations say. So, so this, we did not make any really significant changes. The only changes that we made on any of these having to do with appointments had to do with a change that I think the council made, and Terry or Alice, you might have to jump in on this, whenever they made a change to the date of appointments, but not, not the terms.
Can we just take that last part of the sentence out? I think that's what Robert was asking, and I think that would make it a lot clearer. We're just going to take it out and may be reappointed by the council for additional terms. Do that?
You bet.
Yeah. Hey, but, but hang on. So you're saying that for those boards, nobody's going to serve more than those terms?
They may, they can serve a year. That doesn't, that's not what this says. It just says they, for more than four consecutive terms or eight years, whichever is less, and may be appointed by the council for additional terms.
I know, that's what he's saying to remove.
Right. And we either need to change that wording-
Or add that wording to the other board.
Well, we need to change this wording to where they'd have to be off of it for a specific period of time, and then they come back. I mean, I think four terms is enough. We need to get, they got to recruit people in there, I think.
Well, you're planning zoning, I mean, that's just, that's the shortest term. The other boards are three years.
Terry had a recommendation that we need to take with all the two. Anyway, that's, that's a question I've got, the way that's worded, because it appears that though, it means that after four terms or eight years, we just aren't going to keep them all going.
Yeah.
And I think what the intent is, is that they would have to sit out at least one year, and, or at least a term, and then could be reappointed. That's what I'd rather see. Yeah, I had two.
Is there any problem with wording something like that that way, Karen?
Doesn't that take, oh, Terry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we, that little, that, on page six, we can take out that and maybe reappointed by the council for additional terms. And, and again, if there's a break in terms, then that, that starts the, that would start the kind of clock, the clock ticking again.
That's right.
We've got people currently on some of these boards that have walked past this.
Yeah.
So how do we address that?
Just whatever they, to their end of that, this current term, did we find somebody?
And you've got some leadership on some of these, so just-
Okay, flip on over a couple pages to page eight. Two point five point three two. And I think the issue has to do with the last sentence on there. It says each member reappointed and each new appointee must serve for a full term of three years unless removed, as provided. I think that should be two years.
I'm sorry, tell me where you are again.
Page eight.
I'm, I'm on eight.
Two point five point three A two.
Okay, can, okay, the zoning board of adjustment, okay.
And the last sentence says each member reappointed or each new appointee must serve for a full term of three years unless removed, as provided below. But yet we changed the term to two years. Should that not be for a full term of two years?
Yes.
So I think CBA, I don't know if, if CBA had a different, you know, bylaws. When we established the CBA, it didn't have different bylaws, and that's why it had different terms.
I think we had a lot of the three. Karen, why, what was the reason that we needed to go back to two-year terms instead of three over the board?
Because under the constitution, to go to three-year terms for either council members or appointed board commission members, you have to have an election. We had an election for three-year terms for council members. We did not have a charter amendment for three-year terms for appointed members. So by state law or by the constitution, everybody is a two-year term unless you've opted for a longer term. And we did that for council, but not for board commission members.
I knew there was a good reason, thanks, sir.
So, so Terry, do we change that then back to two years? Is that correct? Okay. Okay, got it.
Okay, don't go too far from there. Next one, three one. Each zoning board adjustment member and alternate shall serve for a term of two years. The terms of three of the members and one alternate member shall begin on, I think that should be October one of each odd number here, and the terms of two of the members on the, and one alternate member shall begin on October one of the even numbered years. Would you not want those two to be the same?
Terry, is that?
I, I mean, that's, that's just the choice of the council, whatever they want to do. I mean, I, I think, let's see, let's see, when do, when do P and Z, when do we say P and Z members start, are they October one?
P and Z starts October one.
Yeah, I would, I, I think that's a good idea, just have, have it all be October first.
Okay. Good catches, thank you.
All right, there's one more, there are two sentences down from there. Two point five point three B three. It says no member shall serve more than four consecutive terms for twelve years, we need to change it to twelve to eight. I missed that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, done.
All right, anybody else? Got any items?
Thank you.
One, one, class, Angela. Rick, you're pretty, you got anything?
No.
Okay, my kid?
No, sir. Looks good to me. Thank you, uh, thank you all for, for how hard you worked on these ordinances. I, I've read through them, they, they, aside from these few little adjustments and things, which have added up over the few months during this time, I know y'all, y'all went above and beyond to get it ready for us, and I thank you for that.
I didn't have to say my melitonia tonight, I just read a few pages every night.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
Oh, that's funny. So, so if you-
Got a motion, Robert, purpose of this, Angela Nichols, to approve the adoption of new zoning ordinance for the changes that we brought up to be contained in chapter fourteen zoning ordinance in the city of Joshua, Texas, and repealing the existing zoning ordinance in its entirety, currently found in chapter fourteen zoning of the code ordinance. Further discussion, all in favor? Rick, you, yes, okay, bye, yeah, all right. Motion, Terry, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Karen, next is discuss, consider, take action on the ordinance to the city of Joshua, Texas, on a homestead extension of five percent, making the findings and providing an effective date.
I thought we were done with the ordinances for tonight.
Yeah, I wish. I guess, was there a stamp item we just put in here? Yes. All right, uh, you know, this is what we've been talking about, was doing a five percent homestead extension. And a lot of comments have been going back and forth from this, Terry prepared an ordinance for us. You may have any discussion? Yes, sir. Robert?
Since the last meeting, I've, I've thought long and hard about this, and I've also researched the things that I wasn't aware of at the time. And with the things that have gone on this past month, I've got a list of issues I think we need to at least consider and discuss. One is that right now, we do not know, as far as I'm aware, that we know what our tax evaluation is going to be from the tax office. Is that correct?
So we have our, about two weeks ago, we have, we have the, our June estimates. They did not change that much, except for the protest loss went from about a hundred ninety thousand value to about sixty million, which costs about a hundred and thirteen thousand. It stays at that number, as we discussed last time. In May of last year, with a one point seven million protest loss, our May evaluation went to about fourteen million in the June evaluation, or estimate, and then went back down to about four point two million in our certified. So it's likely that that number's going to come down, but as it stands right now, that's kind of what we're working on to give us our plan.
I guess.
Yes, correct.
Second is, do we know if we're going to get the safer grant that's going to be adding additional funds or additional cost to our budgets in the near future? Have we, have we thought about that? Do we not know, or do? We do not know if the county's going to give us any relief on next year's dispatch fees. I know the mayor has written a letter, and I don't think at this point we've heard anything from them. I just said they take it out of consideration. Yeah, take it out of consideration, give it considerations, D, you know, that means around, around, uh, that is going to jump to what next year?
Twenty to forty thousand dollars. More, more than what it's now.
More.
Right.
We don't know how this COVID matin's going to affect the sales taxes this year. Josh had said it hasn't done anything really so far.
Right, I was sharing, Jerry, earlier today, the narrative as well, that we got our June numbers last Friday, which is April, if you remember, two months in arrears, that's the first, uh, first full thirty days of the impact, and we're right at where we were, which is about two point three percent ahead of budget, which is about six, a little over six percent ahead of last year. Luckily, based on our, we, the, the premise, or the, what our retail's based on, we haven't seen, we didn't see that, this one, this one, this one, at this point.
Yeah.
But we, it's because we budget, we budget so conservatively, we begin with, it's low already, so we really didn't do budget cuts, but we have seen that there.
The fifth thing is, we're currently operating with budget expenditure fund, I think it was, what, hundred and some odd thousand?
Hundred and sixty, sixty. Hundred and sixty, seventy.
Some yearly charge and some equipment. We do not know what we're going to come up with next year and how it's affecting, none of it affects cities, so we can be assured that it's not going to be favorable to us. We currently have vacancies in public works that we can't fill due to the low, low wage. One of the reasons is the low wage we offer. Or others for, for, one thing we're, and I've argued just for a while, we, we've been pretty good training for some of our, some other departments, uh, because of our starting wages and our wage for our newer employees. I know we're probably never be, if we start cutting the base, it's going to hurt. We do not know how long our current housing boom is going to continue with approved of large number of houses. But plans of development is just that, it's planned. I know, like the Meadows, phase two to, what, eighteen years, Joe, that's filled out from phase two. We've got the six hundred unit one out here. It might take a number of years for that to ever build out, and let's realize the, the benefits from that. The implementation of the home student essential will only benefit homeowners and really do nothing for our businesses that are in the tax relief at this point in time. And those are the ones that are really hurting. I mean, we've got a large number of families that are hurting, but so are our businesses that have been, haven't been shut down. And finally, there's nothing that the home student essential will accomplish that did not be accomplished this year, adjustment in the tax rate for the next year that will benefit all residents, businesses and residents. And this is one of the biggest issues I've got. Is the fact that we're fixing to limit all future councils to having to live with this. This can never be rescinded, and I don't believe it can ever be lowered once it's set. It only be increased. And we're going to, we're going to saddle every council from now on with a loss in property value that we could just as easily take care of with a tax adjustment, with our tax rate rather than the, the exemption. And I hope we all leave your friends building that for this, so either way, and for these reasons, probably more, I feel that it's unwise to implement this exemption for this next year. And that I would propose, not making a motion yet, but I would propose that we table this issue until June of two thousand twenty-one. And put it on the schedule, and hopefully by that time, we have more better information as to what we're going to do with the fire department, what we're going to do with housing and how that's coming along, and what the state legislature is going to put down on us. That's my-
Hey, Robert, let me address some of the, a few statements you had there, by kind of going backwards, a little bit, issue with the, yes, issue of kind of managing it by the tax, you know, you want to manage it by the tax rate.
Right.
The problem we run into, and Josh, you probably kind of understand, maybe, tell me if I'm wrong, but we can't manage it by the tax rate that much because the state came down last year and mitigated that ability. And so if we, this city council probably eight years ago or so ran into a situation that it couldn't raise the tax rate where it needed to be just without triggering the election. And that was at a higher point, that's when we had some tremendous growth, but we're still out there and go for another decade. So if we manage by a tax rate aspect, if we say, yeah, we'll turn it point two five, whatever it is this year, for that hundred thousand dollar net difference, how do you do it? Well, next year, if it downturn does happen, we can get it back because we won't be able to raise it.
That's correct.
You, you won't be able to-
And I'm not saying we have to do it this year for the tax rate if it's not feasible to do it. But my issue is, we are having to approve this tonight, and we're not even starting the budget process till next month.
Which is the best time to do it, because if you think about it, we have to know what we're going to be looking at for a budget. And if the council agrees and decides to move forward with some relief for the citizen, for the property owners, the homeowners, as little as it is, every little bit will help. And, and I think we can move forward with that and put the burden on the council, on the city, to say, hey, they're going to have to work- to say, hey, they're gonna have to work within these boundaries. And then when they come to us and say, okay, are we gonna establish the tax rate, we'll have to look and establish that. You mentioned low wage in public works, but I don't know if it's low wage in public works, because when, you know, I think we're paying almost, almost fourteen dollars an hour to start for labor.
Just right, for a recent, uh, recent increase.
So we've pushed our, our boundaries on it for what we get. And stuff, our police are not on the low end, maybe more by far, they're definitely on the lower end, you know, in any of those and stuff. So for us to just keep thinking that we just have to pay more, pay more, pay more, we're not feeling the department missing stat. Department need help, we're not feeling, public works department need help, there's a lot of jobs out there that people don't want to do anymore. And you can't just pay so much that you're gonna also guarantee you get the position filled. Because I think if you look at our police department, we've had some pretty good pay raises in the last five years. So push that number up, push that, push that number up. And with all their, their incentives for longevity and all that, it makes sense. For what we're giving, that would get long-term ownership. That's, they offer that. That look worse. It's pretty small in that regard, it's pretty long-term vision. Keep as long as you can, but Terry's gonna move, because they can't, how many, how many can be lieutenant? Positions, be able to move these people up in the ranks where a lot of them will want to eventually get to, because there's only one position, or two. So, so I think, you know, I, I, hey, I'm all within, are we shaping our city? I hope so, I don't care with that, because it makes them, it makes the city go, you know, tighten everything up.
Okay, sure, I'll, I'll just kind of hand it there as a personal standpoint for the budget. As you, as you, hopefully you'll address the staff report, the staff recommendations, obviously make a recommendation in terms of this, but I did list a number of, I think, in considerations that are issues and councils consider. I, I will say this, when it comes to budgeting and, and, you know, kind of forcing, and when you say the city, I think it's, you mean, you mean me forcing me to, or the city to, what you said, hoping that you force us to, I guess, budget even more conservatively than what you're kind of wanting to do now. I, one thing I want to stress is, what we have been seeing broke the last couple of years, you have to keep in mind that we have been trying to hold low on the budget in terms of basic services from, ever since I've been here. We, the idea or the notion, I like to do is look at the budget every year and see that, matter of fact, I started working on next year's budget, and, you know, it's pretty, pretty flat. Without asking for a lot of extra in terms of that, but the, the, one thing to keep in mind is this use of reserve, reserve fund balance. When you, when you're averaging about a hundred sixty to a hundred eighty grand a year at that, every single year that we've been here, I've had to use reserve funds to balance the budget. That is by definition what you would call a deficit budget. Okay, so, as well, let me just say, so, when you, when you're already starting and a name, potential reserve fund, just by pure math, PD per reduction of available revenues would, would increase that, that deficit. So the likelihood that we're ever going to not have to continue to reserve, rely on reserve fund just to balance the deficit on basic services is not going to ever be, you know, I don't believe it's ever gonna be solved by taking, while we've been sitting waiting for the growth, and now that we're having the growth, being, being able to kind of use the, use the, kind of, the, the positive outcomes of that growth to fill some of the holes and do some of the capital improvements, be able to, you know, issue the bonds that the voters approved last year, literally no impact on the sales, on the property tax rather, it's property tax rate. Those are all planned events, and so when you start taking the way, certainly you're kind of baking the cake, even less revenue. Just keep in mind that we're already kind of using deficit, deficit spending when we do our budget by, by, with the use of reserves, so.
And I don't think we know the debt service fees that we're really paying for the bond.
Well, that, that's it right now, so in the, in the, in the analysis, you know, I think, after we got our June numbers, and we're looking at about a seventy dollar per, seventy year, seventy dollars per year on the average homeowner, for the average homeowner. And with about a negative hundred, lower hundred thousand dollars up for the city, just brought up the, uh, and that doesn't take into account the new rates, we're gonna have to calculate in like, the, the debt service that will be added once we have, once we issue the bonds in August or September.
And talk about the deficit, though, at the end of every year, pretty much every year, we'll give you that, money back to the.
Well, that's been, that's been a factor of not having fully stepped departments, and so, a lot of students especially, a lot of college students, and you know, we, we, we've added, we've added a little reserve, that's been, that's been a factor of not having spent the personnel dollars in terms, because we don't have the people there.
Right.
So we have fifteen police officers. Full time equivalent. We have five in the public sector, we only had fifteen time equivalent, we have bond savings for this budget because of that, because personnel is your largest item. And so, yes, what I did, we, it looks like we saved a bunch of money, but we couldn't.
Probably also the under budget are some of our end costs. And so.
Now, actually, that has not been.
Well, like, when we just looked at today, we were already exceeded the permit fees of what we budgeted for the entire year, we still got a third of the year to spend.
Sure, but just like you see with some other cities that are happening now, because they rely so much on sales tax, they could, they can't on sales tax, they're actually going to lay people off. We actually don't have, I guess, a problem, right? We have about fifty percent of the, the second taxes are done. Why, we, we are very conservative in terms of, uh, uh, in this, in this, uh, uh, instance, this specific example, the permit fees, we budgeted two hundred fifty thousand dollars for permit fees, it looks like we're probably going to get, uh, uh, end up with about three ten to three twenty. Uh, yes, it's about thirty thousand dollar swing. Uh, but not every line, I mean, the revenue is likely.
No, I, I agree, but we, we, we do tend to underestimate that, plus, I said.
We always have it, let me speak real quick, Joe. Look at just the growth that's gonna hit in the next five years. And while it is not for our tax bill yet, a lot will hit this year going into twenty twenty-one. And such, because none of those houses were. But I mean, you've got a huge sum of property going in there, plus the others, plus the other metals that we're not even taking into consideration.
Well, you, you need to mind, that's not going to be a net positive, a one-to-one net positive, right? So while we do have quite a few residential properties that are in the people box, that's supposed to be getting around a few of the next five years. That, that in turn is going to increase stress on the services. We're gonna have to hire more police officers, we're gonna hire more public works employees. That's going to increase expenditures as well, so it's not gonna be just a net.
One as well.
What's that?
It's not on the one and one as well. We don't try to establish that they'll pay for every eighteen hundred residents, I need this, 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 this. I mean, it's not quite, you know, functional like, a small area and such, so you, you don't have a vast areas. You know, you look at our higher. What's, seven miles, seven and a half square miles. You know, by far, your, your police usage and all that, although population has some of it, but also the distance of travel, how far they have to patrol, all that has a lot to do with it. So we can do more with less in that regard, so the places can't.
And so is that going to be the kind of the, the policy that we're gonna set then? We already do kind of more with less, that's kind of the premise. We already, that's what I'm saying, is we already use reserves to balance.
On a legislative basis, because we're, we're not, you know, we're not balancing on a monthly basis, we looked at it for the full year.
Right, so is, I mean, that's, that, I think that's to be considered going forward, because we're already acknowledging that we're doing a lot with less. Because it's a deficit budget, because we're having to use reserves to basically.
Well, it starts out as a deficit budget, but it doesn't end up as a deficit budget.
I mean, we're not writing any citations police-wise, we don't have a lot of stuff going on there. Are we able to manage the fourteen police? Is that something we need to do?
Because we have to.
Well, no, I'm saying, but budgetary-wise, if it's working now for what we have on the ground.
Well, I, I think that they're probably, the, the, too, too short with here, it probably could be a, our own variable whether it's working or not. You know, how, how do we define whether it's working or not? You know, uh, you know, when we don't have a fully staff PD, you know, that tends to hit us in the, in the overtime line. And the idea that we had a deficit budget on the outset, but we don't end up with one because we, because we were saving money because we just couldn't fill spots.
Well, that's not the only reason.
But that's the main one, because personnel is gonna be our, our personnel.
I agree, personnel is a big expense, but that's not always gonna be the catalyst as to why we came up with the budget. I mean, you can go back to when we got more sales stacks last year, then we basically this year, we've got, I said, more than the fees were. Last year, you said the fees were about three ten or something, right, judging two sixty? So, you know, where I don't have a problem with being conservative is to go through the year. But I don't think we can say, well, we're pulling money out of the deficit every year, but we're maybe starting the budget, it looks that way, but by the time the year's over, you know, we're a computer, we haven't been doing that. And remember, all the development that started this year won't show up on the tax rolls, not this year, not next year, but till the end of next year. I mean, at the end of that. That's why I'm proposing, let's hold off at least one year to which. If you hold off a year, you got the same deal, we got, we don't have a crystal ball for next year, we're not gonna know what the tax protests are, we're not gonna know if we had to do COVID nineteen. Or you can keep saying, hey, we need to go another year, another year. I think that, you know, five percent is not a big amount. Chilling it, it could be, that could be a savings to people. I think the number one thing I hear when I talk about the biggest property tax. You know, they're seeing all these big increases in the price, uh, you, it is limited to ten percent, but every year we're getting our cut of that. And I think this can show that, hey, we're listening to what the taxpayers say. We're trying to do something that will help them out, we're not trying to do something that's a one-year quick fix and then it goes away, this would be perfect. And so we're gonna work it to where we are able to operate under this budget. I think we've had a lot of people that struggle, uh, agree, maybe next year they'll be doing great, but I think we need to show the taxpayers that we're considered of their money and we're gonna do everything possible to improve.
Scott.
We can sit back.
Mr. Pardon makes a very good point about the housing market right now. A lot of people in this area are struggling financially because of layoffs and furloughs and so on. Yeah, we got a lot of new development, look at the startup there. But builders aren't putting a whole lot of spec homes up. They're, they're not building till they have somebody ready to buy. People are, are starting to think about, you know, hey, look, do I really want to get into a three-year mortgage for a two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollar home? Which if I understand right, that's what these developments are putting in. We do not know, you're right, we have a little crystal ball, we do not know what the full long-term effects of this scam gimmick is gonna be. But it's definitely going to be something. We're a small entity, we're the bottom of the food chain. I, um, I'm all for not paying any more taxes than I have to pay. You know, I'm also all for making sure that our, our budget's taken care of so that Josh doesn't have to come in one morning and tell some police officer he's being laid off because we can't budget out of it caring. We've got department, uh, we, we've got a fire department, we're talking about a safer brand. We added two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the fire, or two hundred thousand dollars to the fire department budget this last year. We're not gonna have to spend, that's, that's great and fine, that takes care of the hundred sixty-seven we took out of, out, out of the, the reserve, but we can't do that every year. Right? And if we do hire those firefighters, we have a commitment to keep them off. And once we start that, we're gonna have to think about adding more and more and more.
Well, that's, that's something I, I think we're, we're kind of missing a little bit of the guidance in regards to, hey, we can always find a reason to take more money in taxes. We can always find a reason in a city budgetary aspect to, we want to protect jobs, we want to protect their wages, we want to protect, you know, the, the roads, the streets, we want to do all that, right? Okay? But at a certain point, we also have a responsibility to the taxpayer of saying, hey, we hear you, we feel your pain. And that, hey, this is just a little token of our understanding that could grow in the future if everything goes the way it's gonna go. But to assume that, hey, we're not gonna, we're afraid to take that step. We're, we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen on the budget, we don't know. Well, you know who controls the budget is this group here. And so, yes, sometimes decisions remain. And having been the longest-serving person in here, nobody's made a tough decision yet. We always find a way to do it. We always have found ways that, that, hey, money shows up at the end of the year. We almost get the bills paid, we get nice equipment, we get all the, all the stuff. I remember when we came into it, when I came into this, you would not believe what the police were driving at that time. Okay, the newest car was probably eight years old, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand miles. So, so I think we have really expanded what this city spends. And that, hey, sometimes we can look at tightening it up. And I think when we looked at a five percent deal, what was it, a hundred thousand dollars, is that speaking like?
So we can.
Yeah. Well, absolutely, five percent every year. But it's funny that we don't count on next year or the year after that.
Yeah, obviously.
We just, absolutely.
Actually, you got.
That's, that's for each, yeah.
Thank you. Without the crystal ball, without knowing what the future is, right? I know for a fact, because based on the, the history, Central President District is gonna hit me with a ten percent increase next year.
Oh, I'm in the middle of a ten-year deal.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's born to happen, right? And like I said, I understand where Mr. Pardon's coming from on all, all these things. But cutting taxes, that's the thing we did. It's been proven time and time again that whenever taxes are cut, revenue does increase. It may only be seventy bucks, but guess what? That's a lot of ice cream cones, very important.
Starbucks.
That's some Starbucks coming, that's some, some Burger King. I, I mean, that, that's money that can be spent in the city to, to generate more jobs, to generate more, more excitement for the city growth that, that, that we need. So it is a tough decision and, and it is one that is a long future look. I, I see no need to table it, we need to make a decision, either yes or no. And that's, that's my, that's my discussion is, is whether or not we can table it. It needs to be yes or no, but I'm, I'm, I'm not for a table, I, I think we do need to make the decision. And I would like to, to request, recommend that it be a roll call, but not, not a show of hands.
I agree. I agree.
Angela, do you have anything?
I just have a question. So Josh, on an average, on possibility, how much, is it seventy dollars?
Right, about seventy dollars.
Or a hundred dollars.
A hundred and eighty. But the average, on our unit, is the average on that?
It's not much, but it would be every year. Mike, you got anything, Mike Kidd?
No, I'm, uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, going forward with five percent.
Rick, Bruce?
I'm in agreement to go forward with it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Hey, and then with roll call vote, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, I've got a motion by Jerry Morris, second by Mike Kidd to approve the five percent posted exemption during the discussion. We'll do a roll call vote, I'll go first, I say yes. Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert, in the interest of immunity, yes.
I'll do it, if you need me, it's for starting this.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, Josh, we just like to leave the job a little more interesting.
That's interesting work for it. It just, okay.
We're gonna have to.
No, they're conservative, but.
Next item is to discuss, consider renovating type A board's approval of Rumpel's reimbursement for the construction of downtown public improvements. Is there anything you want to add to the staff report? Uh, what Mr. Rumpel did is, I guess he went to the type A board and asked that he would make some improvements downtown, uh, to the parking and everything, the two properties that are coming up board. Reimbursement, I didn't see, was it a hundred percent reimbursement or was there a? And I guess he, it went through the type A board and the type A board approved it.
Will this be type A times?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So to answer everybody's questions, this is not coming out of the budget for our deal, this is coming out of the type A budget. Uh, but basically he did go in, uh, what, would you mind, Josh, just explaining in short, what was it he asked?
He made the public improvements, which is all the public parking for the new spot that he has down there, uh, north, uh, further than, uh, further than north of what the, uh, the main section is. He did all the public improvements, we were gonna have to do anyway for the park parking. So, so that, that new spot he has there, uh, in our roadway, he did all the concrete there that can be used for any of those.
Right. And that is, that was all city property, that was not, there was not any private property down there, it's basically what he did, it helped out everybody. Anybody else have any other questions? Let's take a motion then.
I'll make a motion, we approve that reimbursement.
Got a motion by Jerry Morris, second by Anselm Nichols to approve the type A board's re- approval of Rumpel's reimbursement for the construction of downtown public improvements. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, next is staff report, does anybody have any questions on staff reports? My only comment is I appreciate the new business report, that's what I was with. We both, um, Josh's, uh, signature agreement. I know we approved. Oh, that was a consent agenda. Okay, that was a consent agenda.
Very much behind you, put the, uh, information across on that, I appreciate that, I know.
You don't have anything? And I, uh, Terry, you're just below, uh, just out of curiosity, if somebody was, uh, on an existing board now, and let's say they've been on there for ten years and we're saying it's, hey, do they serve until their term ends?
Yes.
Okay. So they would, they don't have to actually quit right now, it would just be a matter of when their current term ended and they would not be eligible to be reacquired.
Correct, correct, they get to complete their current term.
I have a question, please, Josh.
Okay.
Okay. I, I know this is, is a little bit early and so on and so forth, but I know in August and September, we'll end up having to have special meetings for consideration of budget and so on and so forth. Can you begin to work up a schedule on that so that, so that everybody can start making sure?
Yeah, we, yeah, we actually have a calendar, I can, uh, just see it going dates. And we're really, again, we're really waiting on just the new truth of taxation worksheet that the controllers drafting. Because of all the new rates that we have to calculate, uh, the, uh, compressed comp frame, which I have to do everything, it's gonna be really kind of, uh, really, really fast and furious once we get those, uh, but, uh, so I'm kind of waiting on that.
Till you release it, Kevin.
Sure, yeah, yeah, so. Also, uh, how are we planning to report July? As of right now, we're moving forward to July third. Uh, we, we, uh, given, given the social distancing aspect and gathering, the group gathering, uh, parameters from what's set up by the state, the governor, uh, so far, we're moving forward to July third. So if anything were to happen, the next, we're gonna have two weeks, I guess, if there's a, like, I think, you know, we've been pretty lucky. Obviously, that doesn't mean people can't come from outside, uh, and, but, uh, we're moving forward to July third. It's some, for some reason, something were to happen, we have the Friday of the Labor Day weekend, uh, as our, once it's into the plan. Uh, so right now, we're moving, uh, we're, we're getting off the football field in town, the store has basically put the garbage in there for good. So we're gonna be setting up fireworks where they're, so we have been there often, it's kind of next to Cooper Valley, uh, behind the visitor's parking lot, we're moving everyone to behind the grabber podium. There's, there's some sufficient power there, and actually, I think we'll, we'll be allowed to have a little bit more room. There'll be a little bit more shade a little bit earlier in the day, and actually gets a little bit more, uh, legitimately helps come from food trucks and some of our other, other, uh, aspects of where the bands gonna use, it's gonna be facilitated a little bit better, and we don't have to worry about, uh, the football field at all. The only, the only convenience or inconvenience is the football field will be in stadium, a lot of body sits and stands, so that they'll be the only inconvenience, I think, for people having to bring their own chairs, but that, that's, that's the plan.
We have porta potties coming in. All right, there's nothing else, we're adjourned at eight forty-six.